Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to note, roll call.
All members present.
And Board correspondent report, Pat.
What's going on? Okay. Waspah, Wisconsin Associated School Boards has decided to not renew its membership into the National School Boards Association. Last November, they voted to withdraw participation in their programs, but now they've decided not to renew the membership. They're citing the interests of the Wisconsin School Boards are not being met by the National Association.
I agree.
And part of the, all the leadership and all the stuff that happened last fall. So they just said that that inflamed the partisan tensions and that was not good for, for schools, especially schools in Wisconsin. So they were opting out of that for at least a year. And then they're-
They have new leadership and everything starting, right?
They have.
At the national level.
Yes.
So we can see-
And they're a little hopeful on that.
Okay.
That things are going to be, so don't be surprised if we, they come around next year and we're back in the thing.
Okay.
For this coming, we're not going to be.
Okay.
There is going to be study committee on shared school district services. And I looked at this and I thought, well, I wonder, you know, because we've been all talking about shared services. But these are a little different services and I think that what we're talking about, they're talking about shared administration services, purchasing. And we do some shared purchasing already, technology, data processing. They didn't get into the, where we prefer to classes, where we're going to share classes with. So we'll see, they're looking for some input, but let's see where it goes.
Yeah.
It's hard when you have your shared services, all the districts have to be in on it. They have to be, they have to want to do this. You've got, even found that out with classes. If you don't have all the school districts that want to participate-
Well, we found that out with programs.
Yes.
When we wanted the-
Yes.
County schools to participate in our tech program.
Everybody's got to buy in and if they don't buy in-
And if they want their own.
Yep. Then you, yep. There is a, the state of Wisconsin through the Office of School Safety is beginning training on a Critical Incident Response Team. CERT, they're calling it. And it is, they're going to, it considers a school-related critical incident to a sudden unexpected incident or a sequence of events which can cause trauma within the school community. It's designed, you know, to address when you have something, one of these critical incidents is happening. To see where that goes. I, I looked at this and I thought, hmm, CERT, CERT. So why did that sound familiar to me? And then I called my youngest, I don't know if you guys remember this, but back probably 2007, '08, we had a critical, Critical Incident Response Team of students.
Yep. Hard answers all over the place.
Yes, and we had team here and, because I don't remember it because my son was part of it. And they did triage and that was supposed to be their role. They had little, they would do, you know, drills and stuff, so. But this is, this is going to be a little different, so we'll see how that, how that turns out.
And I think, isn't the intention that they're going to have a team of specialists available-
Yes.
For like counseling and things if there's some big trauma?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be a threat, doesn't have to be next week, you know, it can be a threat, can be anything, but that's what they're, they're looking at.
So support for the districts?
Support for districts, yes. And then there's the bipartisan school and gun safety law that was just signed into law. And what that means is, they're going to be building on, when Parkland happened in 2018, there were some things that they put in, into place and they're going to be building on that. And what the, what the new law is going to do is going to provide additional support for mental health services for children and families to the tune of almost $2 billion. They're going to stick in new different programs. So hopefully that will help. I'm glad to see that they're finally maybe addressing-
Well, I'm putting mental health as a, as a focal point for safety.
Yep. That's what's going on.
Very positive.
Yep.
Hopefully that's not through a competitive grant process.
Right. Right. Because the competitive grant process has never worked out-
Ever.
For our small district.
So it looks good for them, but it doesn't help any of us.
I don't see the word competitive in any of this, so we'll see where, how it turns out.
Yeah. Well, we'll keep pushing.
Yep.
All right. No student representative, though, is a lucky summer. All right. Board Caesar report, Mick.
You know, I really don't have much. We had our annual dinner meeting at the Hinterland Brewery. Really nice place for you to stop, to stop in there. It's Jeff Dickert's last meeting also. I have a meeting coming up in August here in Algoma at the Cafe Talazo with Colleen Tim. She wants to meet with all the board members individually, so we will see where that goes. See what comes out of that.
Is she the new, did she replace-
She is, Colleen is the new-
She replaced Jeff?
She replaced Jeff, yes.
Okay. Yeah, summer things slowed down a little bit, so. Okay, misconceptions and rumors. The first one I want to address, which has been bounced around this town, I've heard it myself, is that no, the school district is not purchasing the associated bank building. Because that rumor just keeps coming around.
Just keeps filtering.
So, we never have thought of it, never will, and yes, it's not in our future plans. So, that's the first one. The second one is that Nick and Teal have lucrative three-year contract with the school district- after they leave.
How would they leave then?
So basically, that is also a false rumor. We are going to be reading some of the things that they have done for the district and I think it'll become very clear that if there is any money that has been one way or the other, it's that these two have been bringing money in to the district, not trying to take money out. Granted, we do hope that we cross paths in the future and because we have the same goals and things like that. But no, there is no contract with these two. The final one, and the more I think about it, the angrier it makes me because it's gotten personal. It's that the school board forced Nick and Teal out.
Oh, I didn't hear that one either.
Yeah. So, that's personal. And now I am going to say, this whole misconceptions and rumors agenda item has been filled for almost a year with nasty lies, hurtful rumors, hateful things against leadership and the district. We should never have to have an agenda item like this that's filled with that kind of thing. My intention was to have misconceptions about our programs, explain what we're doing, not have to constantly combat things that are detrimental to our district and hurtful and hateful to some of our staff. And if anyone had to deal with that month after month after month, I don't know anyone who would feel comfortable staying in their positions. So, to set the record straight, once and for all, the board was told in January from these two individuals that they would not be renewing their contract at the end of the school year. They were giving us their notice. We were extremely disappointed and upset, but we understood. Because as I said, if you get to a point where you don't feel like you can feel comfortable in a community because probably a very small percentage of those people want to keep up with rumors and not only starting them, spreading them, and it just doesn't stop. And the crazy thing about it is, they are leaving. And that's been known, and the rumors don't stop. So, bottom line is, maybe those who have started those rumors or are spreading those rumors are starting to realize that these two individuals are super valuable assets to this school district and this community. And so now they don't want to take credit for the fact that they got what they wanted. And they're trying to put it on the school board. That's it. No. Any consequences of these two talented people leaving this school district, any negative things that happen are on you. I'm talking to whoever it is who started the rumors and are spreading them. And that's that. Don't put it on us. It's on you. I mean, you struck a nerve, the last rumor got personal. This board does not want to leave these two people, lose these two people and recognizes their value, but also understands unfortunately that it was a decision they personally felt they needed to do. So, I'm done with my rant.
Nice job. Yes, nice job.
Hey Barb. Well, I mean, does anybody on this board feel any differently? I mean, it's, and these rumors have to stop. It is destructive to person, you know, personally to people. It's destructive to organizations. It's destructive to the school district, which means it's destructive to our children, you know. And we're here to try and, you know, not have that, so. Okay. I don't see any public here, so we will move on. I guess I'm going to keep talking. Board president announcements. Okay, I can get unpleasant stuff again. This month, we had two really fun things that we were able to do. The bittersweet one, which was a recognition for Nick and for Teal. We did a luncheon and a recognition. The staff put together some things to try and just make sure they knew that as much as it felt like, you know, there was a lot of negative feelings toward them, that, you know, it's always a small group that makes it feel like it's the big group, but that there is just a huge amount of appreciation and respect for everything that they did. So we had a really nice luncheon and a lot of individuals put their messages personally on some tape for them. And then the other was a really fun recognition of our board member, Dave Wessel, where we had the privilege of having the executive director of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards come up from Madison, along with the, they have a funny name for it, the immediate past president for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, Sue Today. They both came to personally present Dave with recognition for 40-plus years of school board service. And, and so that was, it, you know, yeah. That was very, very nice to have here. It was great to have those two individuals come to give Dave the recognition he deserves. So that was also something that happened this month that was wonderful. And I, and we taped it and I think it's going to be attached to this meeting either at the beginning or the end of it so others can share in that celebration. More on a business thing. There is some school board function, this. The, I don't know if anybody is interested. Again, I know where those that, those of us who are retired are a lot more available to go to educational things. But again, just to remind anybody, when you do get, there is July 8th and 9th in La Crosse, there is some things. And then the online learning platform for educational opportunities. And then finally, I think this is the best spot to do it, is Pat asked Nick and Teal to list some of the, the things. Because again, it's been 10 years of a lot of positive things in this district and it's never been put in, down on paper. And I think none of us were super surprised that it was like a binder full. But we want to highlight so that it is heard by a larger group so everybody can recognize and remember what was started by these two incredible individuals and what we hope to continue and what they brought. So I'll let you start.
Okay. Let me start by saying that when we interviewed you back in the day, the only thing I knew of Nick Hochart was what I saw on, on the football field when I watched in Madison. And the fact that you were walk-on for Barry Alvarez. And if you're going to do that for Barry Alvarez, you've got to be a worker and you've got to work your tail off if you're willing to do that. So in walks this guy and he's got a suit and a tie on and I thought, hmm, he cleans up pretty well. That's a, that's a good thing. And then he started, and I remember, I will remember this, you started talking about partnerships and the vision you had for education through partnerships. Little did I realize that, you know, all these years later, those partnerships would grow into 41 different partnerships with different organizations, local, statewide, through, throughout the United, continental United States and really across the pond, Scotland. Didn't realize Scotland. But across, you know, across the big waters, we have these partnerships, which was, is amazing. And through those partnerships, we realized all this money coming into the district, which we would never have done without all these partnerships. Through the tune of the grants, $1,572,000 worth of grants. Wolf Den, Community Youth Advocate Implementation, the Mental Health, Access to Adventure, Algoma Venture Academy. The list goes on. And then donations. And this would include the Community Wellness Center. And then our tech ad play, played $2,285 million in donations for these programs. We'd have never been able to get that throughout without these partnerships. And then the Wolf Tech. You know, who would have thought that when we had Wolf Tech, they would, we'd start a business? We started a business. $250,000 in income through that. And then the awards. Okay, the Foundation of Culture Health Award, that's, that's, that was a big deal. I mean, that, not every city, there are very few cities that get that. And then the All-American City Award for Algoma, which the city would have never realized without the school district. And then to be recognized, stop me where you want to, where you want to go.
Oh, I, no, that's all right. I mean, we, we could spend a half hour reading everything.
We could spend a half hour, we could spend more than that time.
I mean, recognitions. On a general, on a general standpoint, internationally recognized in 50-plus countries for the Live Algoma Model. Recognized in front of the Dalai Lama in Madison for the empowerment strategies connecting us to the models in Afghanistan and Africa. We were the first to establish a public charter school in Kiwanis-Indore County. We were the first to share reopening of school plans in the state of Wisconsin during COVID in June of 2020. We were the first to reimagine health and wellbeing through insurance cooperative. We were the first to develop our insurance consortium matrix to reduce the annual premium by 3%. Then it goes on. Spotlighted in books, spotlighted in articles. There are pages of statements from leaders around the world regarding Nick and Teal and what has happened here. And I'll just mention a couple of them, or I'll quote a couple of them. The National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine in Washington DC. Quote, "Cutting edge to the approaches and perspectives on community engagement and partnerships to improve health and wellbeing for the community and its youth." Mayor Wendell Lynch from the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. "We admire the creativity and passion that is highlighted in all of your efforts. It was especially encouraging to witness your fortitude and joy at producing such fine work during the challenging times of COVID. We have learned so much from you. Most of all, our commitment to continue to invest in the wellbeing of every member of our town has been renewed." Amy Hedloff, CEO of Five Healthy Towns Foundation in Michigan. Her quote, "Almost the entire school district community has embraced the idea of fail forward and the leadership is correcting their kids' dream deficit through supporting all to take risks and celebrate wins, even the smallest of ones." The Win Network from Washington DC. Quote, "Algoma is leading the way when it comes to creating legacies of intergenerational wellbeing for all. Local changemakers and stewards work together to steer systems and mindsets. Algoma School District is building stewards to be able to transform their community for generations to come." There's pages of this. And then after that, there's videos of support from leaders around the world that are giving testaments to them that they have here. There's videos on youth leadership, community engagement that... Well, let me, let me read the programs and initiatives because this affects our direct district. I mean, this is what we have available as a district and to our youth and to our community. Wolf Den Mentorship Program, Wolf Den After School Program, Wolf Den Backpack Program, Continuum of Care, Prescription for Exercise, Live Algoma, Hands Only CPR, Algoma Community Kitchen, The Now Garden, the DOT Program, the Community Youth Advocate Student Profiles, School Social Work Intern placements, Ugly Fruit Initiative, Think Outside the Box, Healthy Recipes, Ride for Kids, Community Fab Labs, The Beta Program, Mental Health Through Art Expression. And then it goes on to different research things. And then this is impressive, impressive as well. These are presentation locations because everybody is outside, you know, of Algoma has recognized. A lot of people inside Algoma don't. This is where presentations were done. South Carolina, Oklahoma, Kansas, Washington DC with students coming. Puerto Rico, students came. California, Colorado, Florida, students came. Fox Valley, Wisconsin, students came. New Jersey, Madison, Wisconsin, students came. Green Bay, Wisconsin, students came. Massachusetts, Michigan, Illinois, students came. Iowa, Georgia, Arizona, students came. And then these are programs and initiatives that have scaled, that started here, regionally and state. The DOT, DOT Program, Community Youth Advocate Student Profiles, Business Partner Youth Mentorship Model, Live Algoma Model, Community Fab Labs, Ride for Kids, Access to Adventure, the Wolf Den After School and Mentorship Programs. So if you think the school board or anybody in this district-
Does it sound like we wanted them to leave?
You know. What, we didn't even read every word because it would have taken the whole meeting.
But you know, we also, but you also had a vision for kids and every kid learns differently.
Right.
Pathfinder.
Right. Oh, yeah.
And then the, and then the Venture Academy.
Right.
And I remember sitting at 219 Prospect with you one night, trying to figure out if you should, if you should take this, what he offered you, you know, he, basically it was an opportunity of a lifetime and you didn't know if you should leave that fifth grade classroom or if you should take it. And I remember you talking, you and I talking about, you know, Teal, it's not going to fail. You're going to do great. The school district's going to be, you know, the, the school board's behind you 100%. And we all, and we've been behind you 100% ever since then.
The energy in your leadership and the excitement and the passion swept everybody up. Teal was the first one and then she just became one of the leaders that did the same thing. And we have so much to thank you for. So-
Yeah, as we do. It's been quite a ride.
It has. It has. And it didn't hurt that you were a Southern Door grad when these two were looking at you.
Well, how do we know when these two are awful guys, maybe not changed, changed a little bit, but-
I've met a lot of them.
That was a shocker. That was, yeah, it was a shocker.
Did anybody else have anything they wanted to say? Because, I mean, I don't need to hog the...
No, I think they, it's not, we all feel-
I think that speaks for itself.
Yeah, speaks for itself.
It's been one hell of a ride and just very thankfully part of it.
And look, and like I said, we look forward to maybe working together on something in the future. Wouldn't be surprised at all if we cross paths. Again, the, the path you have us on, you know, you've established. I mean, we, we are going to do everything we can to keep moving forward and expand it further. We're excited to have Jesse. He embraces the vision, so he is going to do everything he can as well. I'm sure we will do a little failing forward without you, but we are going to do our best. And given, like you said, I mean, the vision is an educational model that is meaningful to every student at every level. And that's what they're going to be promoting, along with a healthy community, healthy body, mind, and spirit. And I think because we are going to try and continue that as, as well as they are going to be and, and spreading it even further, that we are likely to cross paths again, so.
And I, I think where we failed forward, or we did fail forward, was we didn't get this out into the public enough. There are still people that say, you know, what'd they do? You know, have you had your head buried in the sand the last 10 years? You know? Come on. So I, that's one thing we as a board need to work on and make sure that we get that stuff out, somehow get it out. You know, when, you used to have the local newspaper, well, now you get the little freebie, but-
Right.
You said the local newspaper was much easier and people do read the newspapers. Not everybody goes online.
Especially people who don't have kids in school anymore.
Absolutely.
They don't understand.
Absolutely. So that's, that's on us and we got to, we got to work on that.
I would totally agree. All right. Moving on, administration reports, your last one for us sadly.
I just want to give an update on like summer projects and stuff. If you can, after the meeting, I think you should go and take a look at Aaron Bollone's classroom. It's really cool. One side of it is all being redone, the kitchen side of it. So it's a little sterile right now because it's all stainless steel and new flooring and stuff, but you can kind of see the vision coming together for that space. And I know Aaron is super excited about having that. Also, you know, all the stuff that our staff does throughout the summer and getting things back up to shape. And you walk in the gym and everything is, you know, sparkling like it was just put in. So just kudos to them for doing a great job and really being way ahead of schedule on, on a lot of our, you know, summer maintenance and, you know, significant projects that we now do, most of them in-house because we have the capacity to do that, so. It's a good thing for the district. And then there's the last thing that I wanted to talk about is our budget. So I know people think that we're stealing a bunch of money, but we're certainly not. It's quite opposite of that. In fact, I can't fathom how much money I've given to this school district to be... When people say that to me, it just blows my blank in mind. So this year, we had a total revenue of $9,333,000 and our expenditures are just a hair over 8.9 million. So once again, I think we are about as fiscally responsible as you can find a school district. I know for 11 years that I have been here, 10 of those years, we've decreased our mill rate, always helping out, helping out our taxpayers. Obviously, when you're bringing in that kind of amount of money, you can do things without always having to go to the taxpayer. And I think that's lost on a lot of people, I think. They don't get it, they don't understand it. They don't get it, they don't understand it.
To a mixed point, we haven't been a good, we haven't been good at explaining that.
And I, I don't think we have great partners here either that always illustrate the fact that that is what's going on. There is a lot of kind of territorialism and how we want to spin a story in AlGoma and you see that, you know, playing out right now. So there's, there's the truth and then there's whatever, whatever group wants to be in the spotlight for that week. So, but facts are the facts. You know, the audits speak the true story. You're going to pay off debt, you know, 10 years ahead of time. So at the end of the day, I know what I did.
Right.
And I know what I will continue to do, so.
And many people know what you did. And certainly the board and the district knows what you did. I mean, truly, when it comes right down to it, the people that don't know or don't care or deliberately working against you just don't matter.
So again, we have another year where we did everything that we possibly could and school district again is benefiting greatly and obviously puts you in a position to do even greater things in the future. So been around a lot of good leaders in my life and that's what they do is they set things up for success regardless of they're there or not. And so there it is.
Okay.
It's all yours now.
All right, thank you. Elementary principals report.
Katie. Yeah, I just have two quick updates. First is the regular semester AGR program goal review. If you take a look, as always, we have a goal in reading and then we have a math-focused goal for each grade level K through three. In reading, we usually take a look at two assessments, so we've set our benchmark at 70% for that. And in math, besides kindergarten, we only currently have the one assessment, so we set the benchmark at 65 just because it's sometimes hard to put all of your eggs in one basket and just look at that as the sole indicator of growth. We, in those grade levels, met six out of the eight goals that we set. So this is, our students are definitely making some growth. One thing that I wanted to kind of just tie this to, which I've been keeping an eye on, if you look at the third grade class from this year, that class was the first class that was offered the full day 4K option. So I've kind of been taking a look at that, not necessarily from an academic standpoint because if you remember me talking about it, we didn't really necessarily infuse and incorporate more academics, but definitely that social piece, communication, problem solving, some of those other emotional well-being types of things. So it'll be interesting to continue to follow these grade levels through to see how that progress continues to, continues to grow. In each of those class, in each of those grade levels, the AGR strategy that was used was class size, so all of our classes were below 18. And actually, in most cases, I think they were 13 to 14 for each session, section of those grade levels. So any questions on that? Okay, and then the only...
Are you going to do this again next year?
Yes.
So then you, you didn't, we didn't meet the two goals, so do we, do we lower our, or do we still keep it at 70 and 60 and 65 and?
I think what this data helps us with is really target where we're providing more of our support.
Oh, okay.
So that would be like our, our title support, so like Whitney and Danielle.
Okay, so there you know where you need to pour in.
Yep. And kind of starting some groups off right away in the beginning of the year. I know with Danielle especially, she is doing some instructional coaching, so that might be a great area to target some of those practices as well.
Do all our, our students take these?
Yep, most of them do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, and that's the whole point of hopefully taking the time to do these assessments is to then target areas that you can focus on to keep your kids improving.
Yeah, definitely. So, and then I just wanted to recap a few things from summer school. So we closed out our three-week summer school session this past Friday. We have a total of 240 students that enrolled in that, in those classes. That is our highest enrollment number since 2018, so that's a huge positive.
How many kids?
240. And that's not including a handful of students as well. So we do have some programming offered through July, so that number will likely surpass the 2018 enrollment of 200, of 200. In 2018, we had 245 students enrolled. Interestingly, we in 2018 had 16 teachers. This year we only had 10, so we definitely had some bigger groups with more support, but overall it was a huge success. Though, like I said, there'll be some continued offerings in July. Strength and Conditioning is continuing with Whitney. Jump Start will start in July. And then there's also two cooking pop-up classes for some of our elementary students that'll take place then as well. So Lindsay Harmon, our summer school coordinator, has done a phenomenal job with all of that, so a huge thank you to her as well. So, yeah.
Good. Yeah, sounds like summer school is very successful. Any questions or comments for Katie? Okay, moving on, middle school, high school principals report and Pathfinder update.
Yes, so this little staffing update, we are currently looking for a math teacher at the high school level and as well as a business teacher. Our math teacher put in her reservation for the project. So those are the two positions that we're looking to fill yet for next year. And then my other one is just AlGoma night out, so that will be held at the high school, but more towards the Loma Center area outside on July 19th from 6:00 to 8:00. I know Jesse will be there. We have a couple of kids from ABA that are going to have a table, informational table about ABA. And then there's just police and firemen and they usually bring in a helicopter, a lot of things for kids to do. There'll be booyah. And it's always just really fun to engage our community with, so that'll be, like I said, July 19th from 6:00 to 8:00.
That, that used to be at Legion Park, right? Okay, so at the high school on July 19th.
Yeah, by the Loma Center.
What is that, July 9th?
19th.
19th, okay.
Okay.
Teal has an ABA update. I know she's not on the agenda, but I don't know if you want me to do that or if you want her to do it.
No, I...
I asked it to her and she said, I... I said, you have three days left.
Yeah. You heard her.
Just to make note though, for the next agenda, make sure you have that just because we have to make sure Michael from DBI has that on the agenda. He'll be Katie's favorite person to deal with. Hope that was public. Current enrollment is 35 students entering this next year. Our cap is 45. Something that I wanted to clear up in regards to enrollment is that the only time a public lottery is necessary is in the open enrollment window that all districts have, which is when April 15th till something, something every year. We're past that and what that means is during that time, if we would reach over our cap, then we would have to go for a public lottery and randomly select students, new students who are on the waitlist. Since we were not at that, then we can just accept them as is on the waitlist until we reach our cap. So our cap this next year is 45 and we're at 35. We ended the school year with 29 students, so we've been getting a few more this summer. Once they're on our waitlist, we do have one-on-one meetings with them. We call it pair team meetings and we explore further adventure just because there are so many rumors out there, misconceptions, and there are many reasons why students are choosing to sign up or sometimes not sign up. Sometimes it has the diverse effect. Like today, we heard from a family that they wanted to sign up, but then they heard that it was for all the spoiled kids of AlGoma because they get whatever they want and don't have to do anyway. So we shared with them how that is not the truth and then we just explore how it's just a choice of learning and the structure and the framework of ABA. We also like to go through the history and I guess more so for the board at this point because this is my last report out. It's important to keep communicating why we have a charter school and what the purpose of a charter school is for a public school district. I mean, the whole purpose is we have autonomy, yes, but with autonomy has lots of responsibility and the true purpose is for us to innovate and then to share with you some really great practices so we can adapt some small chunks into our traditional setting rather than try to transform our traditional setting all at once, which is very difficult to do. So just to keep saying that, we had a very successful open house. I saw some of you there. I think that was helpful to have an open house so that we can, you know, get community members who may have heard otherwise to just come in and see the different things that are, youth are doing. And with that, we had some film crew here from our good friends, US Venture, and they filmed some of our youth, some of our parents. They pulled in some community members, some staff, board members, and across, like there was not a dry eye in any interview. And I say that with full emotion. I mean, Jen was there and her interview as well, but we just overwhelmingly heard that anybody who had been involved with the charter pathway this year, it was transformational for their child. Mostly transformational on an individual level in how they see themselves and their strengths, but also how they are working with others and see others in their strengths. And a common theme was being uncomfortable and knowing that when you're uncomfortable, that's when growth happens. A lot of our youth shared that they might not be learning all of this content, but they're learning this content and the depth of what they're learning and remembering and retaining and applying has been transformational for them in their learning. So that was exciting to see. And when they have the videos, they'll be putting them on social media to try to craft really what Venture Academy is and what we're trying to do. October 4th is going to be a great time for the AlGoma School District. We're going to have our first AlGoma Venture Academy audit. So before I leave, I'm very graciously helping to make sure the 50 documents are in perfect folders and labeled, but Jesse will be part of that and a few of you will be part of that, maybe the subcommittee. They will have interviews with people. They just, you know, like to focus around that stuff and make sure that we're legit in doing what we say we're doing, so it's fun. They went to a PBL Learning Conference in person. It was the first one the state has in a couple of years just due to COVID, but overwhelmingly all of our staff got to go except for Patty. It was really great because they got to meet other charter schools and learn from them and develop this network. And I think they brought back some ideas of how to structure things and play off these other charter schools' strengths. So that was really great and I hope to, to see more from that from just the PBL stuff that they're getting learning. And last but not least, Katie, when she reports as the first, for the first time next month, will share our annual measures. So that should be something routine you could ask Katie or anybody in Katie's position, but as the liaison between the school board and the governance board, it will be her responsibility to report out to just what our measurements are. And we, because we got significant funding from the state to open the charter school, we also have to share our measurements with them. So it's reading and math scores, it's currently an ACT score savers. We monitor, we monitor the number of students who are getting certifications because we require that for graduation. We monitor the number of internships, we require that. And then our governance board training and staff training. Those are some of our things that we look at that you should ask, as well as things that are working to possibly consider to adapt into the traditional setting. And with that, peace out.
Thank you, Teal.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Teal? Okay, did you have anything more, Katie?
No.
All right. Special ed report, Marie.
I just have two quick things. In your packet, you have the seeds for school customer teams. That is just the platform that we use for all of our special education paperwork. We contract your seed with this, so it's going to be developed for you offering.
So that is not new? We've been using that?
No.
Okay.
I just figured because of the other seeds that contract for customer teams, it just everyone knows. And then you also receive the donation for $225 for special education from Home Stead Kitchen and Tap. And they wrote a letter that I wanted to read too, just so, throw a little history in my calendar to watch. This is our donation from our V-Bravel at Home Stead Kitchen and Tap. We wanted our profits from the chips sold that night to go to all three of the high schools in Moni County and the special education department. We would love through your school to purchase and send through items to help your students in the memory of our daughter Brittany Baker. Britten, the torn, the ventricles of her brain. Which delayed her learning. From little on, we knew exactly how to delay her it was because she had a twin sister, Whitney. But that did not stop Brit from accomplishing more than what the doctors thought she would. In 2016, we lost our Britty from a complication after surgery at the age of 19 for development at three or four-year-old. We want to keep Brit's memory alive because she truly taught our family more than what we taught her. Like patience and acceptance and all of those little accomplishments she had in our house were huge. We are so blessed to live in our little Moni County and hopefully Brittany's memory will help others. Thank you, Randy, Renee, Jordan, and Whitney.
They just continue to give, give, give.
Nice.
So this is my public thank you and I also plan to write some more thank you.
Excellent. Questions for Marie? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to committee reports. Start with you, Chris. Safety committee meeting.
We met on May 23rd with Mayor Virginia Hasky, Matt Murphy, the new city administrator, Chief of Police Randy Remicker. Jesse was there as well as Scott Meverden, one of the, he's the chair of the PPP Committee, the Protection of Persons and Property. Spoke about the SRO contract. That's going to take some time. Fairly confident to say we're not going to have one in place for this year.
Because of their staffing shortages?
Yeah, because of their staffing shortages and some information that Mick and I were able to come up with and we're going to have to totally review it as a committee and then go back to them and try to meet somewhere in the middle, I'm hoping. We'll see what happens. Went over the bomb threat. I was able to get a copy of the report from Chief Remicker who got it from the county that was included in your packet.
I'm not satisfied with it.
Neither am I. Chief Remicker said he's going to work with the county to determine and implement a response plan and he'll get that plan to us, so it sounds like they don't have a plan at all.
Okay, I mean, are we comfortable with that or do we want the committee to try and work with? I mean, we obviously have some disaster plans in the school and maybe we could start, the committee could look at what we have and maybe try and figure out some roles of different people and then maybe also present that to them because my hunch is it's more of a priority to us.
Correct.
Than to them and they have a lot of things going on, so I guess...
I think we need to stay on them.
Right. But I think, I just think it would be prudent to take the initiative ourselves and then they can, you know, add to it versus, versus waiting for them to come up with a framework. I think that just...
Yeah, we can do that. I, I was hoping that the school district, the police, fire and rescue would all work together and collaborate on a plan so that the left hand knew what the right hand was doing.
But I think, like I said, there should be some disaster plans that we have adopted as a school district.
That they can work off.
And we could start, the committee could start looking at that and say, okay, this would be, the police department should probably be doing, this is what the... And then when we have sort of a blueprint, working copy, ask some of the individuals to get their input, like you said, so that they can, you know, because we don't expect you to be experts on all the different pieces, but you bring everybody in and then I just think if we are the, we've always found that just going ahead and doing things ourself works the best in terms of having, otherwise if we have them create something that we don't like, then it also could be some friction as well. And that's not the intent. We want to build something that we all feel good about and, and that will work for the school district to keep us all safe.
You can meet again as a committee and nail some stuff down.
Absolutely.
All right.
This is the only report you got from the chief, that little.
That was the only thing they had. That was, that was, yeah, that was the report that's on file.
I also have a clarifying, because I have just invested interest in this, regardless if I work for the school or not, so I'm.
Right.
But do they all, now after, do they all have access to certain things that they can have access to internally in school?
Mr. Ringmaker has not contacted us since we met with him.
Do they even have?
So I just, there are some things, whether they want to sit there and fight about coming together, that's on them, I guess, but there are really easy things that they can do at the county and the police locally that we can share with them to make sure they have access to cameras, doors, radios.
Phones would be a phone calls to.
Things that we, I feel as a school district, that tell them that they need to partner with us on that immediately and not, I mean, that's just.
Right, that, like you say, and I think that's why if, if the committee meets and comes up with some of those really common sense kinds of things and a structure, um, to then draw the others.
A ton of this is, you know, it, we've got to transition our administration, so that's what kind of, it's kind of slowing the process a little bit too, so.
Well, the local, the law enforcement officers do not know that. The last time I talked to like Officer Brad and Officer Sidle. So they might have access, but they don't know. So I think that needs to be enacted from us, from our, from our standpoint.
And Dave, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was wondering, do they have blueprints of our buildings? Now, I bet you a hundred dollar building don't know what to come on the elementary school.
Well, I know that our safety plans that we have been given, you know, when we, which again, it's required, I know there are blue, you know, blueprints in those. Um, again, how, how that information is given to the officers and the fire department and all that, I don't know. It, that would be certainly an interesting question for the committee to ask the people when you get to that point where you're all together. So, anyway.
We should set a date for that meeting tonight then, get that, get that going.
Okay, so that's the two of you and you, okay. You guys can get together on that. Um, Public Relations Marketing Committee, Jennifer.
Well, we talked more about publicizing the onboarding of Jesse events over the summer. Um, we, now that we've had our new website online for about six months, we planned at our next meeting to go through every part of the website together and look at what needs updating or revamping, what works and what needs a little bit of tweaking. That's about it.
Okay.
We, we are looking at having the students start a podcast, kind of the twenty-first century version of a student newspaper, um, so that students can be part of bringing the good news of our district's work out into the community. Um, you know, I agree with Mick that we have not done a good job. When you look through that list, we should, of accomplishments, we should be communicating that out to our community in every means possible. So that's our goal over the summer is to make sure that people know what is going on and hopefully that can stop some of this.
And we have to establish some realistic goals because one of the things that we have been, that the leadership team has been very accommodating to this district is all wearing multiple hats for many years. And so that puts big time constraints on people. And so we can have these big ideas of what we'd like to happen, but we can't, but we have to make sure that we have personnel that actually has the time to do it. I mean, Luxembourg has a full-time PR person that, which is why they are in the Star News all the time. We have never felt that we wanted to use district funds for that kind of position. But at the same time, we have to acknowledge that people with full plates are ready. We can't make expectations that are unrealistic as well. So I think that's part of what, um, through the summer we'll have to work out. Because yes, I think we need to do a better job and we need to figure out why we couldn't, you know, and part of it again is, you know, we've done so many things and if the focus was on the kids instead of telling about it, you know, that was our first priority.
Sure, absolutely.
But now it's time to toot our horns. Finance Committee meeting.
Yes, Finance Committee meeting on June fifteenth. Um, members present, woman Wesley Rogers, and also present was Nick and Jesse and Mary Blaha from Barrett. Um, we went over the budget. Remember now, school finance is a different animal. Um, so this is a very preliminary budget, might, might look somewhat like this when we actually pass it in October, but it, and it might not. Um, but we went over it, um, and we are recommending that the board approve it at this meeting, so. The preliminary budget.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, um, do we have any current COVID statistics? Anybody else sick? We've been tracking, okay. Yeah, without the school year, okay. Um, other items for discussion? Um, School Board Convention, January eighteenth to the twentieth. This is on our agenda because um, this is the time that we can get the rooms reserved. Um, if we don't, um, rooms can always be canceled. But if we don't get the reservation in um, this early, we will.
We missed the early bird.
Yeah, we missed the early bird and we miss being within like eight blocks or something.
Yeah, yes.
Um, so if people can um, think about that and um, and.
I think you guys should go back to the Ramada just for.
Yeah, that's another thank you to Nick.
Holy cats. Why doesn't my bathroom door open? I'm like, oh, that's like, there's a hitch the toilet.
Why, why do the windows frost up? Because they are letting the, yeah, well, anyway. Yes, memories. Um, so with that in mind, have that be incentive to make a decision. Um, I think it would be lovely if um, everybody can make it. I think it's a very useful um, opportunity. So if people can make, take a look, again, you're not committed, um, but if you think you can, let's get the rooms, the block of rooms. If you intention, even if it ends up not working out, let's get the block of rooms reserved. And, okay, we'll move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, the Safety Committee meeting minutes of May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, the Public Relations Marketing Committee meeting minutes of June ninth, twenty-twenty-two, and the Finance Committee meeting minutes of June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
So move.
Motion made by Pat, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ann, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us.
I still move. Go ahead.
Motion made by Chris, seconded by Jennifer. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the budget revisions that were presented in your packet.
I still move.
Still move.
Dave and Jennifer? All right. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve Fund Ten transfer to Fund Twenty-seven and/or the transfer to finalize fiscal year ending six-thirty-twenty-two.
I'll still move.
Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Pat, you gonna second that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Pat. This obviously just goes along with, these transfers go along with the revisions that were presented so that we can balance out our year.
The number is seven-hundred-and-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and forty-nine cents.
Seven-hundred-and-eight-thousand.
Eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars.
Eight-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars.
Forty-nine cents.
And forty-nine cents. So with that addition to the motion and the second, is that okay for those who made the motion and the second? Okay.
Is it and/or? Or?
I think probably it's hard to tell until.
Until?
The day.
Day after tomorrow?
Yes. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, do we have a number for transfer to Fund Forty-six?
Yep, so you have seventy-five thousand and you have a charter specific ABA contribution to Fund Forty-six in the amount of twenty-thousand-six-seventy-five.
All right, then I will ask for approval of the Fund Ten transfers to Fund Forty-six in the amount of seventy-five thousand plus a specific charter ABA transfer in the amount of twenty-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-five.
So move.
Motion made by Mick, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I need, do we have a, well, the preliminary budget was in there, you didn't have those separate numbers, yeah. That was in your packet. I need a motion to approve the preliminary twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budgets.
So move.
Motion made by Pat, do I hear a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ann, questions or further discussion on that?
Just one question, was there anything, I mean, you guys looked it over closer than I probably should have, but um, anything just blaring out at us from last year from different? You know, because we don't have the line item.
I would, I would say that la, last year you had kind of unexpected revenue from the state.
Oh, okay.
So try to like, get that out of your head.
Yeah, okay, okay.
This year, you're going to be, I would say, back to normal, but again, this is a guess, a really heavy guess, right? Um, and we have a number of transitions that have to take place. So like we talked a lot in the Finance Committee, when you lose somebody that's been here for a long time and you replace them, that all, that all that stuff has to balance out. So my guess is, you know, as it plays out, it's going to be all settling down right around that, you know, nine and nine-point-five million, something like that. Um, but again, think about what you spent this year, so. Just over eight-point-nine, so. People get all caught up on the budget. It's the absolute worst-case scenario, um, making sure that we have things in there that if, you know, something does happen. But I think we've done a pretty bang-up job with it, actually. You know, just like, our buses are a really great example from, you know, taking that over in August to now, you know, having, you know, basically four brand-new buses. Um, I think is a really uh, great example of how we manage things. And yes, it was risky, it was painful to do that, but um, when you manage things appropriately, it frees up a lot of other things, so. And we've done that throughout the, throughout the district, so. Um, there's, there's not a lot of stuff that needs to be worried about, so.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Like putting a hundred and some thousand dollars in there for a bus, you know. Whether or not you decide to do that, it's really up to you guys. Um, but there are some big ticket items that if need be, they can.
You got, yeah, okay, yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Can you get them four buses together and you get a picture of them?
How?
I'd like to put it on a Christmas card to somebody.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Homestead Kitchen and Tap LLC for special education.
I'll still move.
Motion made by Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the CISA six seeds, as, seeds for school service agreement. Jennifer and Pat?
Sure.
Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need, oh, we don't have any issues there. Request for future agenda items. Here we go. Future agenda.
I'd like, uh, just a short synopsis. When our, our sound system at the elementary school in the auditorium was updated, it belonged to an organization and thinks it's not that good and they want to donate some money to replace it.
Ah.
And I'll agree with that because it was hard to hear some of the kids on Friday night at the musical.
Okay.
If anybody's got any spare time, um, next week after the fourth and you're at the Moni County Fair stop and work at the stand for an hour. That's where money is going to come from.
Ah, okay. I was wondering how you're going to tie that in getting labor for the fair and, but no, worthy cause. All right, excellent. Um, I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute nineteen-point-eight-five subsections, one C-E-F-N-I, for the purpose of personal matters, higher staffing resignations.
So move.
Motion made by Chris, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Pat, roll call vote, Dave?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
And?
Yes.
And I also say yes.